Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 29th, 2021 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be October 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And Patrick, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
If you all rest, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Rodney, if you'd like to read in the preamble.
Good evening to everyone in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed towards the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. Please, at this time, silence all mobile devices.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone that is looking to speak tonight, please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. So we do have a full board tonight, and what we will be doing is moving our annual meeting to after the two petitions are heard. So the next item will be the Innovation Acquisition LLC Petitioner and Sole- owned Properties LLC and Innovation Acquisition LLC owners. Variance under Section 2.02.4b of the zoning ordinance to permit multifamily residential use in the industrial district. Parcels located at One Innovation Way in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Districts, Tax Map 2D, Lot 041, Case -15, Case ZBA 2021-32. This item was continued from last month, and they are looking to continue it again to next month. So do I hear a motion?
Also move.
Okay. Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? And all abstain? So 4-1-0. That will be continued. The next item, Peter March, petitioner, and Jayway Realty LLC Zebra Express owner. Variance under Section 17.10.3 to permit a ground sign of 96 square feet, whereas 48 square feet is allowed. In Section 17.10.10. A to allow an electronic message display to change at an interval of less than every 10 minutes. The parcel is located at One Peachtree Lane in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Districts, Tax Map 4D, Lot 056-02, Case ZBA 2021-34. Mr. Chair, before the petitioner speaks, can I just have clarification on who was the opposing vote in the last motion?
The opposing vote was Patrick.
And if you guys could just please check to make sure that the bright green light is on?
Press the button, it should get brighter.
Hello?
Perfect.
Good evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire.
Good evening. My name is Fred Penal, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold ledge Ave., Auburn, New Hampshire.
All right, thank you.
So requesting two variances tonight, and they both relate to the Volta Station Rapid Refill at One Peachtree Lane. The first is to request a sign of 96 square feet, where 48 is allowed. And the second part of the variance is to request a change in the electronic price unit of less than the required, I think it's 10 minutes, yeah, 10 minutes, so we're looking for somewhere around 10 seconds for that. So, and I think the sections of the code are in the minutes. In other words, 1710.3 for the 96 square feet, and 1710.10 to allow the electronic message display to change at an interval of less than 10 minutes. So the site, I'm sure it's familiar to the board, but it fronts Peachtree. It has about 270 feet on Peachtree and about 130 feet on Continental. It also, it currently has a 48-square-foot sign, 21 feet high. And it has another, it has entrances off Peachtree and Continental, and off another unnamed street to the rear of the Dunkin' Donuts. But for 30 feet of frontage, we would be allowed 96 square feet in area. The site was leased from Z1 Express by Volta Oil of Plymouth, Mass., who is in the process of upgrading all their C-stores and sites to a new brand, Garrett's Family Market. And the site is slated for improvement sometime towards the end of this year into next year, 2021 to 2022. So as background, gas stations, the petroleum part of gas stations operate at low margins. Fuel revenues, fuel volumes are projected to decline substantially over the next 10 years, partially due to CAFE regulations, which have encouraged people to buy electric cars and also hybrids. So what a lot of gas stations are doing is they're emphasizing the C-store part of the business. The toggle unit on this sign shows the word "market pay." And when I say the toggle unit, it's, that unit there, shows the word "market pay" above the price. Every 10 seconds or so, it changes to "non-member," and the price below it changes. So for example, the price could be, non-member could be $3 for market pay, which is an affinity program. It could be $2.90. And that, in general, it sees a 10-cent discount, something like that. The digital part of the sign only shows words or numbers, not pictures, and changes in an instant without transition. In other words, there's no flashing or rotating or things crossing the screen or anything like that. It's a new technology that allows the owners to charge more for credit prices and to display them in a more transparent way than, for example, adding the word "market pay" to a side banner on the sign. The board will be familiar that quite a lot of the time you'll drive up to a gas station, there'll be a little board to the side that says "cash price." So you drive in, you think you're paying $2.90, suddenly you put your credit card into the machine, and you pay $3. So this is a more transparent way and an honest way of doing that dual pricing. The need to charge more for credit card transactions has become widespread as gas margins have decreased and credit cards have remained either static or increased. So in price terms, the margin on a gallon of gas is around 10%. It depends on times and locations, but that's a pretty good average. Credit card companies charge between 2% and 3.5% of the price of that gallon of gas for the privilege of using a credit card. So it helps the gas station owner to become substantially more viable, and that's the reason that they're doing it. Convenience stores and loyalty programs are a way to ensure the viability of these sites. So a site with a C-store and also a loyalty program, which Volta has, makes that site more viable over time. And you'll have seen this at Cumberland Farms, some of the Naria sites, Alltown, which is the global brand. And they've all started to do this. So it's really, the first one to do it was really Cumberland Farms, and it's pushed everyone along this line. So there's a need within gas stations like this one to distinguish between cash and credit price or cash and member prices. The C-stores are now more profitable than the actual gas part of the business. So the owners recognizing this and upgrading the site and wishes to promote it. Garrett's Stores have shown wide praise for design and usability. And I'd just like to... This is a site that, the first site that they did in Milford, Massachusetts. It's a substantial upgrade to any site, and this would be an example of the sort of theme that would be followed at this site. It includes a C-store that offers very good, fresh food, and it's a benefit to the local community. They're fresh, they're inviting, they're easy to buy from. And that is the general theme that this store will head towards. Now, it hasn't been permitted, nothing's been done to change the store, but this is the vanguard of that change, if you like. As I say, that's a store in Milford, Mass., and they have done three like this so far. So the sign is an integral part of that. The current signage, which is somewhere around there, is hidden behind a tree, and it's also hidden behind the Dunkin' Donuts sign, and it's really invisible till you're almost on the site. And in fact, when you head towards Route 3 on Continental, even then, it's pretty well-hidden. It's not a particularly visible sign. It can't be seen from the highway, so pass us by on the highway. Although they probably wouldn't visit the sign on the initial run, certainly can't see it. And the hope is that people passing it on a regular basis would recognize the store, recognize the brand, and if they could see the sign, would patronize it, particularly as the tolls have been eliminated off Route 3. So what we would like to do is set a new base, raise the sign up to a height of 40 feet, which we're allowed to do, and increase the size of the sign from 48 to 96 square feet. Lettering will be done in two phases. Initial would be a rapid refill, but as the Garrett's brand is promoted on the site, we would basically have changed the top face to Garrett's. The issue at the moment is the sign can't be seen not only from Continental, but it really can't be seen from Route 3 or any other places that this business would like to attract customers from. So to the point, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The store's being remodeled and will provide a useful service to people that live in the neighborhood. So I said the emphasis on fresh, good food. If you walk into the store now, it's a typical C-store with packaged foods and probably not very healthy products. This is a store that will offer a decent amount of fresh food, and it'll be somewhat unique in the area. Hopefully, as I say, at the increased height and the increased size, it will attract people off Route 3. Even if they pass by and they're not able to come off Route 3 on the initial visit, it will certainly promote the store for future visits.
I actually do have a question.
Yes.
So were you saying that it's going to start as a rapid refill and then it will change to...
Correct, yes.
When does that transition?
They're hoping to do that in 2021, somewhere around that. So obviously, all the permits will be gained to move the site from a rapid refill to this upscale brand of Garrett's Family Market. So the transition would be from this sign here, and then when the site became a Garrett's Family Market, the top face would be changed to that, and it would emphasize the brand of Garrett's Family Market. But this is the first stage of a remodel, essentially.
Okay, so the store itself will be remodeled similar to what you were showing on the other side?
Yes, it will be upgraded to that, and it'll have this... Within the constraints of what is there currently, this is the theme that has been promoted across the other three stores, and this is the theme that they want to do here. They want to actually do four stores this year. One would be here, one would be Chichester, a Loudon store, and then a Ballack, Massachusetts store. So this is the 2022... These are the stores that will be remodeled in 2022. This Loudon being, beg your pardon, Merrimack being, I think, one of the first ones.
Okay, thank you. I think we have another question, too.
Yeah. Will that sign be in the exact same spot as the existing sign?
Yes.
Except the top will be larger?
Yes.
And higher.
And higher.
And higher. Flipping that around again, I'm just trying to get a... What's the building facing on the middle picture? What's the building to the left? Is that your gas station? Nope, the next picture up.
Yeah, that's, this is another site, so this is a...
Oh, that's a different site, okay.
This is a different site, so I just wanted to portray to the board that this is part of it. This is part of a very positive change, this gas station. I think the gas station is, I think it's a relatively medium, middle-of-the-road type site that offers a lot of packaged food and, you know, a lot of product that is maybe downmarket.
The reason I ask was because it looked like the sign was on the opposite side of your station, but thank you, you answered my question.
So I think what I've tried to portray is that the store is moving from this middle-of-the-road relatively, you know, mundane-type operation to something that will be a lot more withdrawn, that'd be quite relatively unique to the site. And the sign is really a part of that. So we're allowed 40 feet by height, by right, so that's what we're looking for. And the height of the sign, the size of the sign, will mitigate the effect of the tree and the Burger King sign, both of which block the current sign from view. The public interest is served, obviously, by allowing businesses to identify, beg your pardon, different elements of their operation, maintaining the viability of the site, and also attracting people that want to pay by debit and save money when they fill with fuel. And that's the purpose of this toggle unit here. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. So the ordinance aims to ensure that businesses in town have adequate identification advertising and communication. It allows larger properties to have larger signs. This site, while it falls out of that category for a larger sign, marginally, needs to advertise traffic on Route 3 as well as local traffic. The sign is a logical way of doing that. It's a logical way of communicating it, a different price for a member price versus a, essentially, a cash versus credit price. The only other way to do that would be to multiply the number of digits on the sign, which increases clutter. So this is a logical way of portraying prices in an honest fashion. As I say, the ordinance states that the electronic display, this little section here, can only change every 10 minutes, a minimum of every 10 minutes. The technology to toggle prices has been around for about eight years, and has become widespread in the last five years. The ordinance is intended to prevent flashing electronic signs and likely did not consider this technology at the time it was written. Changes every 10 seconds or so, so the change is instant, and it involves no transition, as I explained earlier. This essentially means that a vehicle traveling at 60 miles an hour would see no more than one change in the sign as they went by it. Really, the same is true of traffic traveling slower, maybe the 30 mile an hour that you would see on Continental Boulevard. You're going to see maybe one change. It's not like the classic definition of flashing, which I think is what the ordinance aimed to prevent. The changes to the ID sign, both size and toggle units, make the prices and site identification easy to read, make the site visible to traffic coming to the site from Route 3 and traffic on Route 3, and also allows the user to be more transparent and honest in fuel pricing. The whole cash-credit differential in pricing is probably the one thing that makes people complain more than anything else about gas stations, and this is a way of being honest about a cash-credit price. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner.
Can I ask you a question regarding...
Yes.
So... Thank you. So, the spirit of the ordinance, I guess I don't really see the spirit of the ordinance when it comes to 17.10.10. A, the blinking light, because I guess I'm not seeing how what you're proposing is the spirit of the ordinance. Because people are on Route 3, I mean, they're hitting, they're going over that bridge at about 60-plus. They're not really looking over, very few. And the people that do use Continental Boulevard are generally people who know the neighborhood. So whether it flashes once or twice as they pass by it, they generally are, I can imagine, are people that travel that road daily anyway, so they're bound to see it cycle through as they go through it. So I don't, I get the sign height, I get that. I get what you're saying with that. It's just the whole flashing thing, I don't see where the spirit of the ordinance really kind of, what you're proposing is kind of the spirit of the ordinance as it relates to why they changed that.
I think that the, if I, based on experience, I think the ordinance was probably written to stop people flashing, you know, "come in and go out and, you know, 10 cent off," and this and that and the next thing. That is obnoxious. I mean, it's the sort of thing that mortgage specialists put up in Manchester, and the Nashville sites. Those were all really flash, flash, flash.
Bright and distracting, yes.
And I'm guessing that the ordinance was probably written to allow people not to do it. And I think that was probably the intent of the ordinance. These don't flash. They don't flash in any conventional sense of the word. That you see, you know, "market pay," and it'll sit there for 10 seconds, and then it'll go to "non-member," and it'll change prices at that point. So I think my contention is that the ordinance was probably written to stop the mortgage specialist-type situation.
Right, right.
And this doesn't really fall within that.
Okay. All right. I think we have another question.
Small point, but particularly for the people at home who may be viewing this. We are conflating Route 3 with the F.E. Everett Turnpike. This sign will not be visible from Route 3. And I'm sure that the presenter is referring to the F.E. Everett Turnpike.
That is correct.
But I just, I think that we should make it very clear so nobody gets confused that this sign somehow way over on Continental Boulevard will be visible from Route 3.
You're correct.
All right, thank you. Please continue.
So as concerns the ID sign, the name of the site and price of gas are two critical elements to the success of any gas station. Signage is very important to these sites. Said that the normal practice of advertising dual prices has become the toggle. It's also, people will put a little sign on it, say "cash price" and that sort of thing, and those are very unpopular, and they're really quite an unfair way of doing it. This is a fair way of advertising those prices. As I said, the other thing about the sign is it will draw attention to a new store in the future that will offer much better, it's a much better quality store than there is now. It's actually a better quality store than the other gas stations in the area, offers fresh items, and it's a name that will become increasingly known as this brand is built out. Site has no other reasonable alternatives for the height and size of the sign. To the fourth point, proposed use will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Most of the other adjacent businesses have large signs, including Burger King, which is around 200 square feet. It's quite tough for a sign guy to walk up to someone else's sign and measure it, but we have done that, but we believe Burger King is around 200 square feet. The Gulf sign that is being renovated right now, the site that is being renovated right now, is about the same size as the sign at 100 square feet. So there are a lot of other businesses in the area and signs that are of an equivalent size, so I don't think this is going to stand out in any sense at all. And I don't think it'll have any effect on property values. So literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. The zoning ordinance interferes with the owner's reasonable use. The visibility of the sign, in particular, is hampered for the continental traffic by the Burger King sign and the tree that's right in front of it. That's that tree. Tough to see, but there's a tree right there, and that's not on this owner's property, it's on the adjacent property. The current 48-square-foot sign is too small to be seen from the Everett Turnpike. Raising up the sign and increasing the size is a logical way to cure this. As I say, but for 20 feet of frontage, we would be allowed this by right. The toggle unit cannot have been considered when the code was written since the technology is relatively new. It's possible to add a static sign saying "market price" or "cash price." This leads to substantial complaints from the public.
How so?
Because everyone thinks it's really unfair, because you pull into a gas station that has a little side sign on it that says "cash price," and you go in and you think you're paying $2.90, suddenly the credit card takes $3. That is a substantial, there's so many complaints about that. This technology was developed as a way of getting over that.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you meant having separate pricing for cash and credit card.
No, no, the method of displaying, you know, other than this method of displaying it, you know, any other sort of static display is just...
More transparent.
And it leads to a sort of an honesty, you know, an honest pricing from the owner to the public. So hopefully, the board will recognize that granting this variance will be unique to the site in this specific facility. The other signs are, you know, larger than this anyway, so we're sort of bringing everything up to the same standard, so to speak.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. So the sign and the digital aspect of it is only for gasoline and the price difference between members and non-members.
Correct. So the sign... Sorry.
So when you renovate the C-store in 2022, you're not going to be adding all kinds of other things to the sign with your digital technology?
Not as far as I believe. I mean, the one thing I will say is the digits are only capable of displaying numbers. They can't display anything other than numbers. It's akin to your old digital watch, you know, that has an 8 and different bits of it light up to show whatever the number is. So you can't do anything, you can't do moving, they don't flash, they don't, it just is, literally is numbers.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Was there anything else that you would like to add before we open it to the public?
I'm happy to take any other questions.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Don't really know.
All right. In that case, I will open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public portion. Further discussion or emotion?
The only thing, the only concern I have is just the change in displays. I understand what the petitioner said, and I understand the comment that's the only thing I'm kind of like, eh? Do we change that? Does that set a precedent? I don't know.
Yeah, being that it's a variance, it wouldn't set a precedence.
You're right, it wouldn't. So I guess I, all right, you talk, me do it.
I'll be honest, I kind of like it. I mean, it's not like you can run any type of a digital advertisement over the numbers. It's just numbers, so it makes sense.
So I'll make a motion to approve Peter March, petitioner, and Jayway Realty LLC Zebra Express owner variances under Section 17.10.3 to permit a ground sign of 96 square feet, whereas 48 square feet is allowed, and Section 17.10.10. A to allow an electronic miss...
Yep, finish your motion.
All right, to allow electronic message display to change at an interval of less than 10 minutes. The parcel is located at One Peachtree Lane in the I Residential Aquifer Conservation or Aquifer Districts, Tax Map 4D, Lot 056-02, Case Number ZBA 2021-34. And Robert, is there something you wanted to add?
My recommendation would be the board consider adding a condition that specifies a minimum 10-second interval of changing, as was presented by the petitioner this evening. Because as of right now, anything less than 10 minutes, the way this is written, could be considered. So they could do it every second if they wanted.
So would add the condition of, per the board, that it would be every 10 seconds that the sign would change?
Yep.
Okay. Does that work?
Maybe no less than 10 seconds.
No more less than.
No more... No more...
No more frequently than once every 10 seconds.
Right, a minimum interval of 10 seconds, yeah.
So approval of the petition with staff's recommendation that the change does not happen no more than...
Or no less. No less than.
No more frequently than 10 seconds.
Correct.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by, yeah, I know, by Rodney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Great evening.
There is a, just so you're aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal where someone could appeal this, but other than that, good luck.
Great, thank you very much, and I think you'll like the store when it opens, so if you ever drive down, you know, past Milford or...
We'll absolutely be there.
It's really, they really are nice stores, and that, you know, they have a lot of, a lot of, it's a lot of stuff that we like, you know, fresh stuff and bakery, you know, nice, fresh sandwiches, and, you know, so there's, I think you'll like it when...
Looking forward to it, thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Pat, driving up 106 to the lake and back every weekend, I pass probably 10 gas stations that have this type of a sign on it.
Yep.
They're not distracting.
Okay.
It's very obvious.
Okay.
I think it's, what you said was right.
Cool.
The ones that flash, you know, cigarettes $4.95 or whatever it is, those I don't like.
I get it, I get it, cool. I was on the fence, but I was, I kind of see where they're going with it, so...
Pushed you over.
So has everyone had a chance to take a look at the change in the zoning board of adjustment rules of procedure?
They look pretty minor.
I think the only change to note is that we will be having our annual meeting, which is what we're having tonight in May, moving forward. You say why?
No, I'm looking at the face of the...
I didn't get a full explanation. Why did we change that, Rob? Is that the lineup with all the other committees?
Basically, yes, at this point, because the ZBA has always been on a different track than Planning Board, and as Lynn can attest, the Planning Board just made the same change at their last meeting as well.
Ah, I see.
Everybody's on the same page, so when you join planning, you'll...
The C-zoning, yes.
So do we make a motion on this?
Yeah, and actually, just for the board's attention, on the cover page, under Roman 3, letter A, we also have to add an amendment to that that's not called out, because that first sentence calls out the month of August, still, we missed that one, so that's going to have to be changed to May, if the board would still move to amend that portion as well.
May?
Okay.
You want May?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments to the procedures, rules of procedure, with the exception of, on Article 3A, it shall state that the chair shall be elected annually in the month of May, not August.
Second it.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Rodney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 5-0-0. All right, now is the election of officers. Who wants to do what?
Rod?
I'd like to nominate...
Turn your mic off. Turn your mic off.
I'm going to pronounce your last name wrong after all these years, Richard?
Consecu.
What's that? Consecu. Consecu.
Close.
Thank you.
For what?
Oh, for Chair of the...
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Wait, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
All right.
Are there any other nominations?
And this will be his final year.
This will be my final year.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, so 4-0-1.
You can vote for yourself.
Congratulations.
You can't vote for yourself.
You can.
You do not vote for yourself.
You don't.
That's bad luck.
All right, well, I nominate Patrick to jump in as vice chair.
And he does such a nice job, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Do you accept?
I accept.
Any other nominations? We could nominate one.
He already told us what would happen if we nominated him.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, 5-0-0.
There you go.
Who seconded Patrick? I'm typing.
What?
Who seconded your nomination, Patrick?
Rod.
Rod, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we've got a good team going here.
Yep.
Don't mess with it.
And don't move to North Carolina.
That's right.
Like our last vice chair. How's she doing? I hope she's doing well.
She's doing good.
Good. How about minutes?
I move we accept the minutes as distributed.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Rodney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So 5-0-0.
Move we adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I spoke out of order. Any other motions?
No more motions.
Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
Seriously.
Yep.